Okay, will you then call the D. Director?
Demae, here. Deb, here. DeBoer.
Here.
Christiansen, here. Salisbury.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
All members of the President, if you would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some invited guests this evening. Mrs. Callahan, question first?
I'm going to read my resolutions.
Okay.
Whereas Kiwanee High School continues to build a rich tradition of inter-curricular achievements, and whereas the Kiwanee High School FFA chapter has distinguished itself by having FFA members recognized by the Illinois FFA Association at Section 3, District 1, and State Awards Day for their fine performances, bringing honor to themselves and their families, as well as recognition to Kiwanee High School and the whole city of Kiwanee. And whereas Cashin Elebrock achieved high honors for his supervised agricultural experience in the Sheep Production Proficiency Award area in 2025, and whereas Cashin Elebrock was named the Section 3 winner on Monday, February 17, 2025, and whereas Cashin Elebrock then advanced to compete at District 1 with his three sheep production projects, including breeding, raising, and showing high-quality club lands on Thursday, March 6, 2025. And whereas Cashin Elebrock was named the District 1 winner, advancing him on to the top five in the Illinois FFA Association at the 2025 Illinois FFA State Awards Day on March 22, 2025, in Mount Zion, Illinois. And whereas Cashin Elebrock made this his second trip to the State Awards Day, but what truly sets this experience apart for Mr. Elebrock is that he not only finished in the top five, but in two different categories. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Kiwanee Community Units, School District 229, Kiwanee, Illinois, Cashin Elebrock, his FFA advisors, Mrs. Callahan, Miss Bailey, and Miss Tagwin, are congratulated on his outstanding achievement and success, and copies of this resolution are to be presented to Cashin Elebrock, the FFA advisors, and the school, adopted by the Board of Education, April 22, 2025.
Congratulations.
Okay, now everyone stay standing for a group pick.
Where are you going to stand at?
I'll give you this.
Sneak back by your phone, buddy.
John will have to stand on a chair.
Such a loving group.
Great.
Kiwanee Community School, District 229 Resolution. Whereas Kiwanee High School continues to build a rich tradition of inter-curricular achievements, and whereas the Kiwanee High School FFA chapter has distinguished itself by having FFA members recognized by the Illinois FFA Association at Section 3, District 1, and State Awards Day for their fine performances, bringing honor to themselves and their families, as well as recognition to Kiwanee High School and the whole city of Kiwanee. And whereas Callie Gale achieved high honors for her supervised agricultural experience in the Food Service Entrepreneurship Proficiency Award area in 2025, and whereas Callie Gale was named the Section 3 winner on Monday, February 17, 2025, and whereas Callie Gale then advanced to compete at District 1 with her food production entrepreneurship project on Thursday, March 6, 2025. And whereas Callie Gale was named the District 1 winner, advancing her on to the top five in the Illinois FFA Association at the 2025 Illinois FFA State Awards Day on March 22, 2025, in Mount Zion, Illinois. And whereas Callie Gale was recognized as the first-place state winner in the Food Production Entrepreneurship Proficiency area. And whereas Callie Gale is the first SAE winner in the history of the Kiwanee FFA chapter. With over 40,000 Illinois FFA members eligible to compete in one of the 48 different supervised agricultural proficiency areas, it is a great achievement for a student to claim this victory. Illinois FFA proficiency awards are not separated by class. All members compete at large regardless of school or program size. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Kiwanee Community Units, School District 229, Kiwanee, Illinois, Callie Gale, her advisors, Mrs. Callahan, Miss Bailey, and Miss Tagwin, are congratulated on her outstanding achievement and success, and copies of this resolution are to be presented to Callie Gale, the FFA advisors, and the school, adopted by the Board of Education, April 22, 2025.
Oh, my gosh. So the award winning? I'm disappointed you didn't bring sheep, Cashin.
Thanks, Ryan.
Cutting through.
I know. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Now, go back over there, we'll see our picture. You're fine, Heather.
Thank you. Moving on, Item 5 is consideration minutes. Item 6 is consideration of financial and treasuries reports. Item 7 is consideration of bills and payroll. Does anyone have any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, I consider Items 5, 6, and 7 of the consent agenda as a motion to approve.
Second.
If we have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the rule, please.
Demae, aye. Deb, aye. DeBoer.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Stefan.
Top.
Johnson.
All right, motion carried. Item 8 is comments from audience. Anyone in the audience care to make comments this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to report of administration. Mrs. Bennet.
Okay. So, district construction update. We are well underway with roof repairs at Kiwanee High School. We are working with top roof, uh, top roofing, and they are providing us some picture updates. So, um, the site is underway. Materials are there and staged, and we're getting pretty much daily updates that things are going well. I was very pleased to know that we had no additional leakage on Easter Sunday. I think, I don't know, Mr. Atwell, you get extra credit and more, you can have my cookie because you were walking the Brockman Gym, I think, Easter weekend, make sure that we were dry, and we were dry, so.
Good.
There's always a little, you know, nervous when you're ripping a roof off and then a storm comes. But they had us waterproof, and so we were protected and we appreciate it. The KHS Biology Theater Edition is underway-ish because we've been working with subcontractors on utilities and placement and, and just the pre-planning stages. Scotty, you've been involved in that, and so it sounds like they're making some more headway. These are just part of the course logistics of how to get everything hooked up to where it needs to go. And so that's all been good. We are under contract with Precision Builders, and Lisa Zell has been communicating well. She emails, and so we feel like we're, we're having good experiences so far. We've also been, you know, working with our architect, Stacy Kidd, PCM+ Design, on designing a fitness court slash tennis facility. And so we've gone through some different layouts. Again, utilities, who knew water could cause such problems? But yes, indeed, where the utilities are and how to work around them and, um, the, right now, we are, basically, the recommendation from Stacy is to prepare designs and bid the project, if that's what the board wants to do. Like you were going to build it with concrete, or you were going to build it with post-entioned concrete, and then let the, let the chips fall where they may, see what bids you can get. And then the board can debate the different types of materials. Asphalt is generally not the recommended surface based on, you know, longevity. You can build an asphalt tennis court, but you won't have it for long in, in a good, working condition, so. But we'll see what the numbers come back. And originally, we were thinking about bidding it all three ways. Now we're sort of leaning to just bidding it two different types of concrete, so. But the drawings are starting to get more refined, you know, and we are still hoping that we may be able to at least get concrete poured by the fall. We probably won't be able to play on it if that's what every, if that's all how it works out, because that's the cure for 30 days. But at least the project is at least moving forward, you know. Planning something isn't just, you know, a quick thing, so. But we are getting more information, and Stacy's communicating that, so. She was on-site today, I met her, so that was good. Those are, that's pretty much a quick recap, some of those projects that are going on. The central asbestos abatement took place over spring break. No problems, well, there was problems. During the asbestos abatement, some of the pipes broke, and so then it worked double time to get the abatement done, so JR could get in there and fix pipes, and so we were, you know, just a day away from not having any water at Central School, no big deal. But JR and, and his crew are fabulous, and they saved the day, and we were able to continue on with school uninterrupted, no problem. So, um, that was great. We will proceed with the HVAC project and job sales and service as soon as the school years that, that they'll be working on that at that central factory. So that's just the, this is the quick recap of construction. I did also want to just give a shout-out, moving on a different direction, to the music department. Ms. Krone, Mr. Bennet, Ms. Bartok, for the band and choir students on their Class A Sweepstakes Championship for the second year in a row. And we will recognize them at the regular May board meeting, which, if you, you know, know the band and choir, they won't fit in here. So we'll really enjoy that. I had a brilliant idea. I thought I invented this idea. I said to Mr. Atwell, what do you think about having the kids play their piece, a couple pieces, and having an assembly, you know, with the whole student body? Because this is a big deal, you know, to win a state championship. He says, back in the day, we used to do that. Apparently, this was not my idea. So I can't take credit for it, but May 8, we'd like to have an assembly. Time is to be determined.
One o'clock.
One o'clock, okay. So any, and I believe we're going to recognize Callie Gale at that time also because, you know, state championships are big deals. So if you're able to come over at one o'clock, I think we're going to make a wonderful day of it. So. That's great. Thank you for that.
Before we move on, I want to point out, I was in the school during that week before the contest to borrow a piece of equipment for the foundation event. And Mr. Flannery was there, and he said, you hear that? I said, what's that? He goes, the band was in your gym, and he said, sounds like another first place.
Oh, you were right. You were right. Yeah. And, and I did go to the, to the, so the Sweepstakes is the solo, not symbol, plus the organizational, and all the points get combined. And so for organizational, I was, I was right there in the gym, looking right at those beautiful new tympanis. And, oh, I do love a good timpani roll, so. Anyway, appreciate the foundation support again on those instruments. I have more purchase orders if you'd like to spend some more money. Just going to drop a little hint there, that may be coming. So we're just really excited about, and what we're looking toward now is, Mr. Bennet said, we have a lot of brass coming up. We need more brass instruments. It's like, well, this is great news, you know. So we're continuing to grow that program, and we appreciate all of our instructors and their efforts for that, so that's great. I guess my last item on my superintendent report of administration is just that all the FOIA requests were fulfilled. You had in your packet a stack that looked like this. We believe that 10 of these FOIA requests were AI-generated, and we saw advice on how you, how are you supposed to fulfill a FOIA request that didn't come from a human, that's just some random emails. So I actually went to the whole Zoom on FOIA requests, and indeed, they said, there's no, there's no legislation at this time to protect these almost spam-like requests. So we had to fill them, and thanks to Dan Nolan, this is, you know, days of his life, you know, to do it, and that's fine, that's our obligation, but it just feels a little, you know, not very nice, but that's okay. We did it, so.
I think it's bordering on abusive.
Yeah.
And if we're producing them and copying and printing them for, for a request, we're allowed to charge for that.
Right.
But if they requested in an electronic format, and they request a waiver, we can't charge anything, and so even though providing it in an electronic format, we don't have the cost of printing, we have all the cost of.
The work.
Hours.
Yes.
The, the, the person hours that go into generating these.
Yes.
I hope that the legislature can address that.
There is a bill that went to, and it was supposed to be a science committee, I think I may have updated, and I reached out to the, um, the gentleman who sponsored the bill. I can't remember his name at this time. I sent an email and just said, you know, thank you for sponsoring this bill that would basically protect entities from AI-generated FOIA requests by saying, you could ask, are you a person? And if you didn't get a response after, you know, exonerated request, then you didn't have to fulfill it if you couldn't verify that who you were filling it to was an actual person. So, but as, as of now, you, you don't, we're not protected by that. So I, I, I check the bill status every Sunday. I go through what's moving, and that one hasn't, like, gone to the third reading, hasn't voted, hasn't taken a vote on it, but I do hope that, you know, they will take that in consideration, those lawmakers, because, to your point, the harassment and the, the, you know, it does take up everybody's time. And so we'll see. But anyway, we did, we did what we were obligated to do, and we appreciate everybody's in the offices, you know, efforts to do that, so. Okay, Mrs. DeBoer's next. Sorry if I stole any of your thunder there.
I was just going to add that we got a letter from IHSA this week, and I copied it for you guys. It's just really nice, just thanking Alex and her, her work at the organizational contest. And so it's like, oh, it's always nice to send good news. So I'm just happy to have a copy of that.
Suzie Naublock is a nice supporter of Kiwanee's programs. She's a nice lady.
Okay, so on April 2nd, we inducted 36 members of International Women's Society. Students have to have a 3.5 GPA and 10 service hours if we invited to join. Marissa Midas did an excellent job of creating a beautiful banquet. Our college and career pathway endorsements, that thing's moving right along with us. So this year, education, welding, and agriculture have all been approved. Things are going strong. Next year, right at the beginning of the year, we are ready to start culinary arts. We're working with Illinois Community College. On Motive, we have a partnership with Gustafson Ford. Did you saw the paper today? They talked about us. They have been amazing. So we have built a really strong foundation, and that is all Donald Neal and Heather Lolday and David McShawn.
Yes.
They're working, and they have a curriculum that we're going to be able to use, and they have a plan about how they can help us, how our kids can go out there. It's just, it's going to be great things coming out of there, so I'm really excited about that. And then we also, we don't have the, everything worked out yet, but business, medical, and computer science, we are ready to hopefully have those done by the end of the year. We've been talking to Black Hawk, about to do credits for each of those. We've been kind of reaching, starting to reach out to business partners a little bit, just starting conversations in those areas. So we're really hopeful we'll get those completed next year. This year, we have seven students eligible to graduate with an endorsement. They've done all the work that they needed to do, which is great because we've added less than a year.
Yeah.
So they've worked really hard to get that stuff done. For the junior class, class of '26, right now, we have 22 kids who are, either have started the programs or will have signed up for classes to finish the programs. And then the class of '27, our sophomores, right now, we have 42 kids who have signed up to take key classes their junior year to start those programs. So, and we've already been talking, Heather and I talked today about, okay, how do we, what are we going to create to get down to the seventh, eighth grade? And we started talking about that and get them excited for things happening at our school. We're moving right on.
And you had an idea for graduation to recognize those pathway endorsements?
So pathway endorsement, kids will be wearing orange cords, and that's just another way, because they had to do a lot of extra work to earn those endorsements, so they will be recognized at graduation.
Awesome.
There's been a lot of discussion about that at the state level with IESB, and that was a feature of the most recent journal. But from what I've seen and from the conversations I've had, it, it appears that we're getting up and running much faster than most districts. A lot of districts are really struggling with, well, how, what can we do? How can we fit it in? You know, they're, they're not, they're having trouble getting anything off the ground, and it seems like we are out ahead of it maybe, and at, at least ahead of a lot of our peers.
The districts that were highlighted, they had like one program.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
My understanding in a conversation I had with Kirk Gustafson was that Ford Corporate is pushing this, and they were either surprised or impressed that we had so much in place.
They were, they were shocked when they walked into the, they saw the lift, and the kids were under the car working on it, they couldn't believe it.
Yeah. In September, it was an empty garage.
Yep.
You know, with storage, and now it's, it's amazing what they've accomplished.
Yeah, well, thank you for all your work.
Absolutely.
Mine will be very short. Looking at postseason baseball, softball, the sectional will be, baseball sectional will be at IBC for the subsectional A. We'll travel to either Bureau Valley or Monmouth with a regional that hasn't come out yet. Girls softball, the sectional will be at IBC, we're in the subsectional A. And we will either be at Canton or St. Beat with a regional. For track, girls sectional will be at Rock Falls, and boys sectional will be at Pontiac. That would be a nice football plus trip. And then I've also listed the scores there for the music sweepstakes, in case you were interested.
Thank you.
Hi. This evening, we will be voting for approval on our annual CDP, um, for title. In here, if you read through this document, a lot of the new things are with the new assessment pieces that we purchased for screening and benchmarking. And so that added some changes in here, as well as, um, we are looking at adding the high school as a title school also next year. At the end, you'll have the family plans, parent involvement policies, and the school commitments for each school. The high school one will come at a later date for approval. Any questions on the CDP? You also have title review. If you notice, for the funding, every year, it kind of goes down a little bit. This year, I don't have any numbers, they usually come out in May. It's projected to go down a bit. We have our March frame reduced numbers on here. I do want to highlight our surveys. We send out student, parent, and teacher surveys every year. This afternoon, I thought I'd peek and see how it's going. They're the best parent surveys that, since I have been doing title. Communication between school and home, 94% as today. They're all in the 90s. Teachers willing to discuss triumphs, concerns, growth, 98%. Feel respected by staff, 96%. They're all very positive. We have 22 student responses so far, all very positive. So that's, that's something to show how hard we are working in the district. We have great teachers, great administrators, great school board members, and I feel like everyone's very appreciative of what we do, and it shows in the surveys. Also, I just kind of put down here, consolidated a lot of things of, things that we paid for title, the interventions, social, emotional. We will continue with cartwheel counseling services next year, which was funded through title. It seems to be very helpful. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like to take a moment to really appreciate Mrs. Tuckbates for all the effort she puts into this. You know, a million dollars doesn't spend easily. You know, this is a huge amount of work. It's very specific on the requirements, you know, since it is a federal grant, so we can't, you know, play around, this is rules. And so she puts a huge effort into this, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot track. I was going to start about track. At Central, they have 18 eighth-grade boys, 17 seventh-grade boys, 18 seventh-grade girls, and 13, oh, 18 seventh-grade boys and 13 eighth-grade girls. And the ponset were different. Our track conference is fifth through eighth grade. We have a total of 22 kids out for track. And our sectional this year is in Galva, which is different. It's never been in Galva. So we're real excited. We already have one eighth-grade boy who's throwing to state qualified in shot put. So we're really excited.
Great.
Hopefully, we get one to state.
Awesome. My turn again.
Yep.
Okay, so just briefly, academic committee. We will have our strategic planning on Saturday, and that'll be at the high school, at Gobi Student Center. And then again, on the Friday following, for more breakout. Ralph Rem is our consultant, and he did share some of the discussion. He's, he's the moderator, you know, I'm the facilitator, you know, reviewing mission and vision and things like that, so. I think it'll be an interesting experience. I'm looking forward to the fellowship of it. It's not hard for me to get together with people and, and talk, so I'll enjoy that. And it'll be, it'll be nice to just interact with people and enjoy that time together. The social, emotional wellness committee, me and, myself and Amy Doug, we talked about cartwheel at our meeting and looked at some of the options moving forward, quotes and different things. So once we know our title allocation, then, you know, I think we'll be able to propose to the board what, you know, that fits in a budget. And, but really, so far, I've had positive feedback from everybody who's interacted with the cartwheel platform, the counselors who make recommendations. I do have a, a parent who reached out and said things were going well. You know, they don't have to because it's their own private, you know, but that was good. So we feel like it is a, just another resource we can offer our community, so we were happy about that. That's it.
We have no unfinished business. Moving on to new business. We have consent items A through E listed. We have consideration approval of district-wide parental involvement policy, consideration approval of Bella Alexander parental involvement policy, consideration approval of Irving parental involvement policy, consideration approval of Central parental involvement policy, and consideration approval of Ponset parental involvement policy. So I'll ask for, the way that the recommendation is to approve, so I'll ask for a motion to approve A through E under consent. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the rule, please.
Deb, aye. DeBoer.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Stefan.
Top.
Demae.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye, motion carried. Items F through J, F is consideration approval of consolidated district Title 1 Plan. G is consideration approval of Bella Alexander Title 1 Plan. H, consideration approval of Irving Title 1 Plan. I, consideration approval of Central Title 1 Plan. And J is consideration approval of the Ponset Title 1 Plan. We have a motion to approve items F through J. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the rule, please.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Stefan.
Top.
Demae.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye, motion carried. K is consideration approval of co-op purchasing agreement through KHS Foyers.
Okay, so, um, again, bless JR Salisbury and his team for keeping, you know, the dinosaur running at Kiwanee. Okay, so again, bless JR Salisbury and his team for keeping, you know, the dinosaur running at Kiwanis High School. That's the original boiler. So it's been welded, repaired, welded, repaired, and every time we turn it off, it leaks. So it's always a question of if we can get that thing fired up again. So we, Sam from Rural is very good to us, very responsive. We have a trusted relationship with them. And he's prepared for us, this quote, for your consideration. Basically, the idea is to use two boilers. So you take the big, big tank out, you know, and you replace it with two, almost like two Bella Alexanders, if you think about what we did there. They become smaller now, you know. And then we use like a two system, so you don't fire them at the same time unless it's really cold. So one will, one will fire for a while, you know, a cycle, and then you'll fire the other one. And it's, the intent here is to increase the longevity of the machine. And also, on the really cold times, you can fire them both. So this is my simplified explanation. Sam said there's a possibility that we could go with a single boiler to reduce the price if we felt like we didn't want to go with that two, that dual system. However, that's sort of like kicking the can down the road where then you're just going to basically plumb in and get ready for a second one, knowing you're going to eventually need it. And then you'll have to buy it later and then put it in. So it seems to me that you just eat the whole elephant at one time versus, you know, putting off the second boiler in the event of trying to save a little bit of money, which you're then going to then not have the savings by the time you get two years down the road and have to do this again. So, you know, the, the quote was a little higher than we originally thought, but we will be able to save on doing some of our own concrete and roughin type work. So we won't have to go out for bid for other work that will help. So hopefully, we can, you know, get us up and running with new boilers before the cold hits again, which you think is going to be so far, but it's not. You know, when you're talking about a project like this, time is of the essence. So this is for your consideration. I recommend that we do it before we are in a bad crisis.
It's also unlikely that the price of any of that material will be done.
It's not likely, no.
The second boiler is a backup system also.
Right.
If there is a heart failure, instead of having a building without heat, you can keep it 60 degrees or something, you know, you can at least continue to function.
Well, the thing that I understand about these boilers is they got to run full more. There's no turning the dial down. They're either, they're either cooking or they're not. So that's what wrecks these boilers because it builds up residue.
So you need to have that dual system to?
So one could be running hard, and the other one sitting. But then if you want to shut this one off, then this one comes on.
Then take the other one out. That makes sense.
Instead of both of them running hard.
Yeah.
I think that's the key to it.
Ah, makes sense. JR seems to understand. I trust him.
The new boilers are a lot more efficient than the 1950s.
Yes, yes.
Do we have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
Move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. L is consideration approval of resolution providing for an interfund loan for the working cash fund to the education fund.
Dan Nolan makes this recommendation, and I make this recommendation. This is just a typical cash flow. We've got some investments. And so, and, you know, you have that bills versus income type of thing. And rather than pulling money out of a CD to put back in, we're just going to do an interfund loan and then put it back to working cash. Very common, you know, to be done. And it's just to keep all the accounting correct, you know. So basically, Alan and Em are both that way. They're just for fund balance purposes, and then they'll go back by resolution back to working cash.
Should we consider them separately?
Yes, do consider them separately, but the story is the same for both of them.
Okay. So we're on L?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve? And is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. Em is consideration approval of resolution providing for an interfund loan for the working cash fund to the IMRM Social Security Fund. Same, similar situation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion, a second for Em? Is there any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. N is consideration approval to authorize superintendent to prepare the 2025-2026 budget. That's a routine item for this time of year. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. O is related, consideration approval to authorize superintendent to spend funds prior to the final approval of the 2025-2026 budget. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second? Any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. P is consideration approval of bus financing bid.
So I want to thank Dan Nolan. He took the financing out for bid a couple of years ago, which helps, you know, competitive bid on, on the financing. And so the low bid this, for this year, this round of bus leases came in at 3.960% with the state make of Toulon. So they're the low bidder in the, with the lowest interest rate. So a recommendation to approve state make of Toulon.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. Do you want Q and R considered separately also?
Sure.
Q is consideration approval of construction agreement for Kiwanis High School Clean Energy Design Group.
CBBG was the original developer of the solar system at Kiwanis High School and at Central School. And now with the roof repairs, panels have to be, some of them, not all of them, have to be removed in order to make way for the roof and then reinstall. And the reinstallation is quite complex. But Dan Griffin is CEBG, and he explained that to me today on the phone. And so I know he's, you know, working already at the high school. We were really in a tight crunch. And so he started that, seeking the board's approval. Q and R are the same story. You can take separate votes, but basically those panels have to be removed and reinstalled, so.
Same story, different building.
Same story, different building. Different claim from different storms.
Okay, so we're considering Q. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. R is consideration approval of construction agreement for Central Junior High School with Clean Energy Design Group. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. And moving on to action from closed session.
Recommendation to approve the resignation of Maria Garheda. This should write tech support effective at the end of 2425 contract. Julia Murphy, Bella Alexander aide, effective 4/9/25. Pam Cox, summer school cafeteria, effective immediately. Hector Cantu, KHS assistant wrestling coach. Jared Hahn, KHS assistant football coach. Bren Patty, KHS assistant volleyball coach.
You've heard the recommendation on those resignations. Is there a motion to approve? And is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Deb. Any discussion? Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. B is retirements. We have no retirements. We can move on to hires.
I'm going to pull number seven, and then I'm going to read the rest. The recommendation is to approve Nicole Underlee, Central sixth grade teacher. Erin Forsythe, Central elementary resource teacher. Bradley Schaefer, Central Junior High ag teacher. Erin Duffy, Central alternative teacher. Rick Sernovich, KHS paraprofessional, working with anatomy, physiology. Amanda Mallory, Central aide. Paul Lindstrom, KHS assistant golf coach. Brooke Downe, KHS assistant tennis coach. Ashlyn Helm, Central Junior High softball coach. Tess Anderson, Central eighth grade volleyball coach. Bradley Schaefer, KHS student council advisor. And then we can do the summer sheet separately. So if we do those through 12?
With the exception of number seven. Okay. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have the motion, a second? Call the roll, please.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. Mrs. Dany, how would you like to do the summer school?
Okay, let's do the, all the teachers as, as listed in your packets. I guess I will explain that, well, I can read them all if you want to, because this is up to you. This 21st Century Grant, had, they did reach out to me, they, through the ROE, they do, they are going to do a summer program. So at our last meeting, we, we had no budget. We had no plan from them. They didn't tell me what they were doing. So I did get information from the ROE that they are, that grant will be paying for the ones in your packet that are in yellow that say 21st Century, those are paid for the 21st Century grant out of the ROE. So they are hiring two, four, six, seven teachers and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven paraprofessionals. So some teachers we had already hired are being transferred to 21st Century, which didn't make any sense to me why that would matter until I understood the program proposals. So the 21st Century, in order to have a 21st Century program, you have to have a program proposal. And again, that's a federal grant. So you're talking about, you know, the packets of explanation of what you're doing. And so versus reinventing the wheel and starting with all new programs, we basically, if we have the grant, we run that program, and the teacher teaches that so that we don't start from scratch and build a whole new proposal for the grant. So it made more sense to me once Lisa Brackett explained it. And so that's why you'll see some of those being transferred. And then we are hiring people to, or that's a recommendation, to then replace the title teachers that, so that we can still have some more programming. So basically, we will have a very robust summer program again. I know that after COVID, you know, we, we really beefed up the summer programming. We had probably, well, I won't say the best, but anyway, we had a very robust summer program. And, you know, I knew that that would probably come to an end eventually. We weren't sure about the 21st Century Grant program this year, but we, we have title money and we have 21st Century money. So, you know, we, we're going to offer those services to the kids. And I know that teachers and the, and the principals appreciate having the kids engaged. I think your parents do too, you know. It, it really keeps them, and we, we like to have the kids engaged for at least that month of June. So anyway, that's all to say that the recommendation here is to take the teachers and the aides. I think we could do those together, 13 and 14. We could do 15 and 16 too, since we're, you want to do that? The needs as presented? Okay, so, so we're going to recommend the summer teachers, aides, bus drivers and bus aides as presented in your packet. I'll spare you the 30 minutes of me reading it all. And then we'll go to the summer maintenance after that.
So one vote on 13 and 14?
Is that okay? I don't know why I'm looking at you, Heather. Well, how do you ask to vote?
You, you want one vote on the teachers and aides and then another vote on bus drivers and bus aides?
Um, I, I think, I think we could do them all.
Okay.
Through. Is that okay?
Okay.
So one vote for 13 through 16.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody want that list read?
We have a cookie to eat here, Jeff.
Hearing done, call the roll, please.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Johnson?
You, you want one vote on the teachers and aides, and then another vote on bus drivers and bus aides?
I, I think, I think we could do them all.
Okay.
Through, is that okay?
Okay.
So one vote for thirteen through sixteen.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody want that list read?
We have a cookie to eat here, Jeff.
Hearing done, call the rule, please.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. P is consideration approval of bus financing bid.
So I want to thank Dan Nolan. He took the financing out for bid a couple of years ago, which helps, you know, competitive bid on, on the financing. And so the low bid this, for this year, this round of bus leases came in at three-point-nine-six-oh percent with a state make of two-lon, so they're the low bidder in the, with the lowest interest rate. So a recommendation to approve state make of two-lon.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Do we have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Hearing done, call the rule, please.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Salisbury?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. Now we have the two.